Okay, very good. We have several items on our agenda, and we will begin with the first item being Comcast Cable's proposed transfer agreement. Would you like to leave on that?
Thank you. Um, so, we wanted to update council tonight with respect to the proposed transfer request by Comcast Cable. We have been useful counsel before on this issue. In particular, we talked about Comcast merging, the potential for Comcast merging with Time Warner. Part of that, the agreement has been that Comcast would divest itself of subscribers in several states, one of those states being Michigan. And ultimately, a new company called Greatland would take over the operation of the cable system in Michigan, obviously, including Southfield. So, as part of that proposed transfer, we've had discussions, we've had issues that we feel are important to the city. One of the primary issues that we've been wrestling with Comcast has had to do with the ownership and the right to the INET, which was built back in, when the original, when the cable franchise was developed about 15 years ago. The city put money into that, that construction of that INET, as well as Comcast. So, those dialogues have been taking place. We're also concerned and have attempted to get information with respect to the company that will now be operating the system, in terms of its ability financially to operate the system. We're concerned about what effect this would have on subscriber rate for our residents. And so, those are the kind of discussions we've been having. We also, the council approved back last year retaining Joe Van Eaton and Mike Watzke, both cable attorneys, to work with us on these issues, and they are there in C B. And I thought maybe if Joe Van Eaton could come up and just do a short presentation on kind of where we are. We're not asking for any action of the council at this point. I did note in my letter that the period for the city to either approve or not approve the transfer request currently stands at February 27th. So, depending upon how we go with discussions and negotiations, we may well be back before council at the February 23rd meeting with a request to take some type of action and a recommendation from staff at this time. But, at that time, at this point, we simply want to update, let everybody know where we are, and just put everybody kind of on a page where they understand what the issue has been, and kind of the direction we've been trying to get to. So, if Joe could kind of-
Do you prefer me to sit here, or go to the podium?
Probably podium would be-
Can I ask you a question before you-
Sure.
You say that we have the ability to say yes or no on the transfer?
Well, we believe, absolutely we believe we do. In our franchise agreement, which is, we've now extended that franchise agreement, says that any transfer of control has to be approved by the city council. It's our franchise agreement with Comcast, and that's the provision we're operating under. So, I don't know, Joe, you might want to go into that as well. But absolutely, we believe we have the discretion here to either approve or not approve this transfer request.
So, if we say no, then Comcast could say, "Good luck."
Well, then, they have an existing franchise agreement involved. So, again, I think, look, can we let Joe kind of go into-
Yeah, oh, okay.
And Joe, give us your answer, and your business address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Joe Van Eaton. I'm with Bestin Krieger in their Washington DC office on Suite 5000, 2000 Pennsylvania Avenue Northwest, Washington DC. Those are both good questions. As the city attorney mentioned, you have before you an application that was filed by Comcast to approve a transfer, a change of control of franchising from Comcast to a company that will become known as Greatland Connections. And so, what I'd like to do, that's obviously part of a very large transaction, which I think leads to your question. But, let me go over first what your authority is, where we are in the process, what your options are, and how we propose to move forward. Basically, you are somewhat unique among Michigan communities. You entered into, as you know, the state passed a law, P A 480, that established a uniform franchise agreement, but allowed in section 13 for communities to enter into a modified agreement that could be filed with the P U C and that governs the relationship between the parties. That's what Southfield did. It filed, entered into a modified, uniform franchise agreement with Comcast, and that modified agreement says you have the authority to review changes of control. And the standard you use in determining whether the change of control should be granted is whether the change of control is in the public interest. That's what the franchise that was filed in P U C says. Other communities still have the old franchises that were issued before the Uniform Act passed. And those communities have very strong arguments under some cases, that were decided in this case, that they also have the authority to review, but, the transaction. But you have a modified agreement that clearly gives you that authority. So, that's one of the reasons you're in an interesting position as compared to other Michigan communities, and why the issue is more, is teed up in a different way in this community. So, where are you in the process? Well, you have 120 days from the date an application is submitted to either make a decision to grant the transfer, to deny it, or if you do nothing, federal law says if you fail to act by a deadline, it's deemed granted. So, silence is consent here. The 120 days can be extended by agreement, and by agreement, we've agreed that the first date on which it can expire is February 27th of this month. That's why we'll come up at the February 23rd meeting, is because right now, that's the deadline we've got with Comcast. It could still be extended, but right now, that's the deadline we're working on. And we got the application, I believe, last April or May. Since that time, the city, along with other communities, has been looking at this transaction as closely as it can, and been trying to get information from Comcast. Unfortunately, a number of our efforts to get information from Comcast, from Greatland and Charter have been rebunked. That's one of the reasons this process has taken so long. Nonetheless, you did get a series of reports, a report from Ashpond Skolko and Front Range Consulting, who analyzed the financial aspects of this deal. And independently, staff has been looking at other issues surrounding the transaction, including the technical qualifications of the company, and some other issues surrounding the ability of the company to perform going forward. So, that's where you, that's, what you've been doing then, is an ongoing review contemplated by federal law, and we're now at a point to report and certainly make decisions. So, where do we think we are in the process? Well, the Ashpond Skolko and Front Range Consulting report concluded, and of course, this is disputed by Comcast, I, that they will no doubt be submitting information to the city to rebut that report. But their conclusion was, the company failed to show that Greatland would be qualified to perform going forward without increases in rates, decreases in services, or other things, or without taking other actions that could harm subscribers, based on what they see as the likely cash flows and financial provision of this company going forward. That's the essence, I think, of their report, is that the company's had to show they're financially qualified. And I think that's obviously of concern to the city. The second thing we concluded, we looked at, is that this company, unlike Comcast, which has basically provided services as Comcast to the entire community, Greatland is going to be working with two companies to provide a complete set of services to subscribers. For about the first 18 months after, if the sale goes through, it will be, it will have a transition services agreement with Comcast, under which Comcast will be providing a number of services. And we will additionally have an agreement with Charter, a Charter services agreement, under which Charter will provide a lot of functions you would normally think would be provided by the cable operator. So, we looked at those agreements to see whether those would guarantee, or those provided enough assurance that you would get adequate customer service in this community, recognizing, obviously, that Charter's ratings and J D Powers and other places is not great. This is not identified as the best cable company in the country, obviously. The, our conclusion was that there was not enough protection for subscribers, and not enough way to ensure that Greatland would be in a position to ensure both that Charter would perform, and to take action if it failed to perform, that would protect consumers. So, the technical issues were concerned. The city attorney mentioned a dispute as to the institutional network. That's obviously a critical piece of city infrastructure, and the city's position is that it actually amended, that when it entered into the franchise originally, it amended that franchise, came up with an addendum under which it paid a significant amount for the INET, and it owned the INET. Comcast obviously disputes that, but in the context of a change in ownership, we think it's reasonable for the city to say, "We'd like to settle the issue of ownership. We don't want to let somebody effectively buy the house and find out that they don't own a critical room that may be important to them, and we obviously don't want them to take it over and say, 'Well, maybe the room belongs to you, and maybe it doesn't.' No one knows." So, the idea is with this, that there's an outstanding claim of some importance that needs to be resolved. One of the things we look at in a transfer is, did the company cooperate in the transfer process, something that's obviously critical to our ability to get information and make a reasonable assessment in the public interest. The conclusion in the A N S report, or the financial report, was they did not cooperate. They did not provide requested information that would have allowed the consultants to do a full analysis of the impact of the transaction. And finally, you have a, your uniform, your modified franchise expires in September. One of the things we want to be sure we understand, and obviously, this deal assumes that Greatland Connections will not only obtain ownership, or obtain control over a local franchisee, but that ultimately, it will be able to continue to provide service over an extended period of time. And obviously, if the franchise is about to expire, the question is, will there be terms going forward, or is this company coming in for effectively six or seven months before we enter into sort of a legal limbo, or a renewal moment? So, that's a concern. So, those issues are of concern. We think that those would justify saying no to the transaction, but that's obviously not what we're here saying today. What are your options, basically? Well, one option you have is to say, is to listen to Comcast, look at the material they present, and say at the end on the 23rd, you know, "We'd like to go ahead and approve this transaction without condition." You do have to worry about the financial impact, the technical impacts, and you have to worry about what that means for your institutional network. So, I think those are significant concerns, and ought to lean against saying yes. The other thing you can do is do nothing, but that essentially has the same effect as saying yes. You could deny. That would lead to an interesting situation, which I think was alluded to before, which is, what happens with this transaction if you deny? Well, the way the deal is structured, the company is actually close to this big deal as long as they reach a certain percentage of approvals. And I think they've probably reached that percentage of approval to close these deals. So, Time Warner could merge with Comcast, no matter what you do, if assuming that the federal government approves of the transaction, they've got an independent review going on. And likewise, I suspect that the Greatland Charter Comcast merger could also go through, which would leave, but Charter would not be able to dispose of the system. It would be in a position where it would have to figure out a way to provide service in the system. And that would obviously be a situation that I think is uncomfortable for you, and uncomfortable for them as well. The other alternative besides, but that may be where you need to go to protect consumers and to protect your own interests. The other option is to approve subject to conditions. The company has entered into agreements for approval subject to conditions in a number of communities, either as part of an overall renewal, or as part of a transfer of the system, and agree, and have been working on conditions that are designed to protect the public, to protect the community, and to resolve some of the outstanding issues. Right now, your staff has presented, I believe this morning, presented a set of conditions to Comcast, where they would be willing to approve if those conditions are acceptable to Comcast. I don't think you'd want to approve subject to conditions that Comcast doesn't agree to, there would be no point to that. But, the best result would be if you can reach agreement and cooperative negotiation with the company that would protect the consumer, protect the city, and allow the deal to go forward on a reasonable basis. So, that's sort of where you are. You are in that process of discussing things with Comcast, and we would hope that we'd be able to report something back at the meeting on the 23rd that would allow, excuse me, that there has been an agreement on reasonable terms, and if there hasn't, obviously, it would then be up to you to decide where to go from there. Any questions?
Any questions? How much pressure?
It seems like on a pragmatic scale, that if we said no, and they have enough votes yes, to go ahead and make the transfer, because all the other states or other entities are using different rules that we're using, we would be the lone holdout, and it could, our service could go sideways, and we wouldn't have much recourse, because they would probably spend most of the time dealing with any concerns that had, for the companies that have said yes, either overtly, or by not saying anything, and time made the decision for them. So, it puts us in a, kind of a difficult situation, too.
It does, but I will say that historically, if, historically, the company has an interest in maintaining the subscribers here. They're very valuable to it. And if it's willing to let service slide in a way that would violate its franchise and allow you to potentially rebut that franchise, you could always sit back and say, you know, "Is there anybody else who'd like to serve this community?" And I think there would be some, some operators who'd be willing to serve the community. Some of the smaller operators who'd be willing to step in and provide adequate service to the community, who'd be in a position to do that.
Yeah, that, probably, but they probably wouldn't have the leverage of purchasing programs from whoever's providing the program on a basis that, so our rates would probably go sky high.
Well, I think one of the problems with this transaction that is identified in the A N S report, is that Comcast has relatively low per subscriber program rate compared to other entities and industries. We've gotten no, we've asked for information as to what Greatland Connections will be able to buy the services that, it will not be able to buy them through Comcast.
Right.
It will be buying them through Charter.
Sure.
And Charter does not have the buying power Comcast has. There is a national cooperative, a small cable operator provides a group of cable programs. So, it's not obvious that, that having a different operator entirely would lead to any more cost than one could anticipate as a result of Charter's operations.
I guess, you know, co-opism, I guess we got to figure out what the dog does when he catches the bus, huh?
That's a, that's a, it's a fair point, and one helps, one helps that, that this is something where you can reach agreement with the company and move forward on a basis that's reasonable for everyone.
And I think that's the goal.
Yes.
That's been the goal.
It is.
We're trying to get to a middle position where we can come to this body and recommend something that protects the city's interest, as well as safeguards the, the interest of the subscribers.
But both teams are playing hardball.
Well, I, I understand.
Yes.
I mean, of course, I don't think we're playing, I think we're trying to get to a point where really, we can come to you and recommend something. I don't think anybody wants to deny this transfer, but, but we've got to be able to stand behind the recommendation to you, and know that we've done the best for the city, and we've done the best for the subscribers.
Yes. You said that Comcast kind of preempted Joe's, that that's 1.2 million customers, is that the only way that that merger could take place, is that this was in any ways they could maintain?
I honestly don't know. This, this was a choice that they made in order to keep the number of subscribers, the percentage of basic service subscribers, under 30% of the national total, that they ventured of, roughly 2.5 million subscribers. Could they have kept them and-
Could it be another community, something to-
I don't think, I, I think one of the interesting things about the merger, and actually, in a bigger picture, is troubling me. What, what's happening is Comcast is basically going to control most of the cable systems on the east coast and the west coast, and then if you look at the map, Charter and Greatland will collectively control most of the Midwest, with especially Chicago.
They get the people, we get the geography.
Yes. If you look at the geography, it is, it is, it is a concentration of these companies in regions that's part of what's occurring. So, actually, in some ways, they're going to get more market power than they had before. So, instead of having someone nearby who's a competing company, Charter and Comcast, you'll effectively have the entire state controlled by Charter, and a company to which, in which they own 33%, and to which they'll be providing services for 4.5% of gross revenue.
I have a question for you, and if you had the change of control on Comcast or Time Warner, the board also wants to provide, I probably get a question later, cable internet owns everything that's currently provided under the contract with Comcast.
Well, I know they'll be providing cable. I'm confident they'll be providing internet and telephone services. I do not know whether, there are a couple of things that Comcast provides that I don't know that they will be able to provide. For example, the advanced X1 box. I know the box may be in the home. I believe that's a proprietary technology. The functionality, I'm not sure will be maintained on the system. And some of you may have noticed that Comcast put up Wi-Fi terminals throughout many of its communities. I'm not sure whether those will be maintained, the Wi-Fi capability, but I'm hoping somebody from Comcast may be able to address that issue. The, the other issue is home security services, which are being provided by Comcast. Comcast is now providing a range of services. All we're dealing with is really the cable franchise side of it. So, I can't say anything with respect to whether those will all continue under Greatland or not. I suspect it depends on the business opportunity Greatland receives.
Okay, and you said that Greatland being a new company, they won't have the ability to cure the low subscriber rate as opposed to Comcast?
Well, they're actually buying programming effectively through Charter. Charter does not have the same buying power Comcast has. I think it's fair to say Comcast has the greatest buying power in the, in the cable industry. So, for Charter communities, at least based on the trend reports that your financial analysts looked at, the first subscriber cost for Charter are higher than the first subscriber cost for Comcast.
So, in essence, the rate would go up once the transfer, should the transfer occur?
It all depends what margins the company is demanding. Obviously, one can, what, that is one of the concerns, is that there will be cost pressures on the company, and the question is, will that lead to a raised rate or not?
And that's a big question. If the rates are going to go up, people will be able to have the same service they currently provide, and if they can maintain that.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's not any other questions, we will allow Mike Watzke to, you know, want to add anything?
Just very quickly, if I may, I want to mention this. Joe did a great summary, but some, two things, Charter. We deal with Charter, I deal with Charter in the northern part of Michigan where they've been, and they are much more aggressive about getting after some of what you have been receiving as free services, drops, things like that. Comcast has been a pretty good corporate citizen in terms of providing a lot of free services. Charter, not so much, just, just so you know. And Charter will be coming to town, so that's something to be concerned about. The other thing is, you're going to hear, I suspect, a great deal about P A 480, and that that's the only law here in Michigan. I would simply like to remind you that as members of protest, and being active in these areas, Southfield has had a voice, and although you weren't a party, you were certainly involved in litigation as a supporter between Comcast and Dearborn Meridian, Warren, and Bloomfield Hills. And we proved, I think, pretty clearly, that although P A 480 is a state law, it is subject to the federal cable act. That's how things work. Federal law supersedes state law. So, that's been proven not only in that case, but also in the Detroit versus Comcast case, which you may have heard about. I'm sure we talked about it maybe this past fall. And that is, if, if there's conflict between state and federal law, and we think that there are a number of them, and two of them have been brought before federal judges here in the Detroit District Court, and both times Comcast has learned that the federal court thinks that they're preempting, that the P A 480 has some problems. So, I just would ask you to bear that in mind, that you have been part of successfully challenging P A 480 where it's hurtful, or harmful to your residents.
Counsel, do you have any other questions? At this time, we do understand that some people think Comcast is a threat, and if you want to put your name and business address for the record.
Thank you, Madam President. Gerald Schmidt, Senior Manager of External Affairs, the Comcast. Before I start, I would like to also introduce two of my colleagues who've joined me this evening, Leslie Brogan, our Senior Director of Government Affairs, as well as Mr. Mike Ash, our Legal Counsel. And if there are questions, certainly, they'll share in the responses. Before I start, I would like to also pass out, as Mr. Van Eaton mentioned, I do have some responses to the Asal report that he intimated regarding the viability of Greatland Connections. So, please, I'd like to share that information with you, and review, if you will, the findings of that particular report. Again, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about some very important changes that are coming to the cable communications business here in Southfield, as well as over 400 other Michigan communities. Comcast Cable Systems in Michigan and several other states in the Midwest and South are coming to, are going to come under the ownership of a new company temporarily named Midwest Cable, and once the transaction is complete, be named Greatland Connections. Now, Greatland Connections will be a brand-new, independent, publicly traded company, and on day one, Greatland will serve 2.5 million Comcast legacy customers concentrated in the Midwest and South, with almost half of them in Michigan. Now, Greatland will be the nation's fifth-largest TV provider, and the largest market will be right here in southeast Michigan. While it will have a brand-new company here, it will retain existing Comcast cable system assets, and employees will have approximately $4.5 billion in annual revenue, and an estimated value of $14.7 billion. Now, to make this transaction, transition from Comcast to Greatland seamless to our customers, there'll be a transitional service agreement between Comcast and Greatland Connections. And now, this is a customary arrangement in the cable industry. Now, Greatland Connections will, will contract with Charter Communications to provide some support services, and will benefit from Charter's market presence to secure cable programming at advantageous pricing. I'd also like to highlight that Greatland will be led by a very experienced management team headed by President and CEO Michael Willner, a highly respected 40-year cable veteran, who is a co-founder of, and CEO of Insight Cable Communications. Now, this series of transactions is subject and reviewed, and reviewed, and approved by the Department of Justice and the Federal Communications Commission. Now, progress filings have been made with both agencies and are currently in the review process. The Greatland transaction will occur after and only when the larger Time Warner Comcast deal is consummated. And we expect fellow review completion by the end of March, and this transaction will then follow within 30 to 60 days. Some of the benefits associated with this transaction and transition to Greatland will provide greater focus on our state and our local markets. Service and reliability will be enhanced for both residential and business customers. And in addition, geographic clustering will enable Comcast or Greatland to tailor customer service and improve personnel and equipment service deliveries to Southfield customers. Now, inasmuch as we will focus on the efficient delivery of products and services and reduce costs of doing business, these efficiencies will better allow us to compete on price, quality, innovation, and service with our competitors. Now, much will be discussed about the role of the Southfield in the transfer of this franchise from Comcast to Greatland Connections. Tonight, we will provide and- Tonight, we will provide and have provided you, if you will, with general information about the transaction and its benefits to the city as well as information about the financial viability of this new company and ask, after your review and due diligence, that this honorable body approve the change of control from Comcast to Greatland Connections. We're here, we stand ready to answer any questions that this honorable body may have for myself, so that Ms. Brogan and certainly our legal counsel, Mr. Mike Ashton. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that you said was that it will be a seamless transfer. That's the objective, is to have a seamless transfer.
Yes.
Now, does that mean that programming will be seamless also?
We have every indication that that process will be a seamless, as I'm telling you right now, our counsel and Frasier. I'm not led to believe anything else. I mean, this is not a new company. It's a new company, but then again, this is not a startup company.
Yeah, no, but different companies have different opportunities. For instance, I could, I have Comcast now in my home. I could transfer to AT&amp;T. They have different programming than Comcast does. So my question is, with this new company, would the seamless transfer mean the programs that I like to watch on a regular basis, would I still be able to expect that that will take place or will I bring their own set of programs in and I have to learn new programming?
Okay.
Or do, or not watch something that I like to watch now?
We don't want that to happen.
Neither do I.
Thank you for letting me, help Gerald here answer, steal some of your questions. And please give us your name again and business district.
Very good. Leslie Brogan, I am the Senior Director of Government Affairs for Comcast in the Heartland Region, 1401 East Miller Road, Lansing, Michigan. We can't speak for the programming in the future for what Greatland Connections will definitely do, but for now, we can tell you that there are not plans to change the programming, the selection. Part of it, I want to stress here, is that we are in a competitive environment. People can choose to go to a different provider for their services and they'll do that because of rates or services or quality. So that's the incentive for a company like Greatland Connections when they come in to make sure they're delivering all these services. We also have to be mindful that we are competing with other cable providers in this very area. And one of the ways which we need to be able to be a healthy, ongoing concern is to have same-level playing field. So while we do want to answer your questions about programming that we know of or other services that we know will be continued, we also ask this body, what was it that you required AT&amp;T to prove in order to get a franchise here?
What did we, what did we have to ask them?
To prove, correct, correct.
Did they could provide service, result? I wasn't on the negotiating team, so.
Well, they're operating under the uniform franchise that was alluded to by your consultants, public at 480, which, which the whole state is operating under. There are a few unique circumstances here in Southfield and we're totally willing to work with the city, you know, to address those. But it was the Michigan Legislature that decided this is how it's gonna go in the future and in order to bring more competition in, there was a very, very strategic plan to make things more uniform. So what we hear, what we hear from the demands are very different from what the state law has projected. And another thing that I, I'm getting a little bit off kilter here, but another thing I wanted to address is this cable report that the consultants have put before you is really the only financial report on a company that has come out with any of these assertions. We have two college professors that are experienced in this field who have written a response. And because we did not really have a lot of time coming up to this work session, we weren't able to get them here on the phone to address, to be able to answer any of your real detailed questions, but we can. And if the Southfield City Council would like that to happen, we can certainly work with you to make that happen. Answer some of the questions.
Mr. Frasier, today? Okay, I'm with you. At an earlier meeting that we had, when the subject came up briefly, I understood while there are other cable companies in the area and in nearby communities, they don't want to come to Southfield for some reason. And I'm sure it has something to do with, I'm really not sure what it has to do with, but it's, what I understood in the meeting is that some of these, at least one of these companies that's nearby, cable company, doesn't want to come to Southfield, I'm not sure of the reason. So we are, it appears somewhat limited. And you can say there's a lot of competition and there are all kinds of companies out there that might want to come to Southfield. I'm not sure that there are, but I still feel that we're not going to get the service that we have before. And the cost, people have said to me, they're worried about the prices, the cost of this. And I've had that from a number of people, mostly senior citizens, but everybody in this economy is concerned about things like that. So it's, you know, with the programming and the potential extra cost, there's a lot of discomfort in the community from residents that are over here tonight. So I don't know how we, you know, people have the right to do what they want and the government can approve them however they want. They don't come and ask us and make their own decisions based on money, power, preference, all kinds of things, politics. I'm not comfortable with the proposal, but at this point, I don't know what our best course of action is, to be honest with you.
Well, I would, I would hope that the best course of action, I think at this point, is to continue the dialogue that we have with Comcast. And again, the interest here is to continue to move forward with those discussions and arrive, again, the goal is to arrive at a mutually acceptable arrangement where we can come to you and recommend and be, you know, in good faith that we possess the rights and we possess the subscribers to accept, you know, all consent that we can. And so really, we feel we're still in that process.
So with that said, we're not making the decisions immediately and we will wait to hear from that before meeting on Tuesday.
Watson, there's a lot of.
So if there are not any other questions, I think we can.
It's not a question, Ms. Smith. So I said, our course of action is to make sure that you understand what we, what we would like to have.
Yes.
And then you and the team negotiate as best as you can.
Absolutely.
So we're not expected to say yes or no or whatever, but we're supposed to, you are listed once.
Right. And I think just in previous dialogues that we've had, that we know that we've talked about and that counsel has seen the value of the institutional network and the fact that all of our communication goes on that institutional network and how important it is for our public safety and all communication. And then again, of course, the subscribers, to make sure that we feel that we have, you know, not put them in a situation where all of a sudden their cable rates triple, double, triple, something like that. We're trying to make sure that we, we're looking after their interests.
Yeah, the, the rest of it, probably gonna happen, but the INAM really is kind of a wrench in that we need to pay close attention to.
Okay, I'm sure you have something to add.
My name is Michael Ashton. I'm attorney with Comcast and Mr. Smith has asked me just to address real quickly the transfer process under Act 480. When the Michigan Legislature adopted Act 480, they took a move away from a utility type of regulation of cable. They decided as matter of state policy that competition would govern the provision of services so that it wouldn't be the type of rate regulation or other types of regulations on cable companies. The idea was to open up the field and allow competition to determine what that is. So maybe there's not a lot of cable companies coming in. I know AT&amp;T is here. I know there's other competition from DirecTV and satellite providers. And then if you have internet services, there's also what's called over-the-top providers, Netflix, Amazon, Prime, those types of services. So what the Michigan Legislature saw was, well, we don't need to worry about regulating rates because, because competition is going to govern what someone's in charge for their services. When Ford sells a automobile, they don't get to look at what the cost, it costs them to build the automobile, they have to look at what General Motors and Toyota are selling similar automobiles for and they have to fix their price in the competitive market. So there's that issue. And part of Act 480's process was to streamline the regulatory process. And with respect to transfers, the transfer under the act is simply the parties transfer the franchise and then provide notice to the community after the transfer occurs. So in most of our Michigan communities, there hasn't been an issue with respect to the transfer. The transfer's gone smoothly. In addition, even, there's another layer of protection that Act 480 provides for providers, which is a competitive or level playing field provisions, which says if you have AT&amp;T, if AT&amp;T has a uniform franchise agreement, which allows them to transfer without, you know, with notice after the fact, those same terms need to be applied to other providers in your community. You can't enforce more stringent requirements on one provider as opposed to another provider who has a franchise. So that's aspects of PA 480. But even if you ignored PA 480 and you just looked at the terms of your existing franchise, your historical franchise, the consent to, cannot be unreasonably withheld, Section 10.5.2 of the franchise says, the municipality should not unreasonably withhold its consent. So, and then, and then the consent is tied to conditions related to financial, technical or legal qualifications. So it's a very narrow set of circumstances. And there's been one federal case dealing with what rights the municipality has to deny a franchise. And in that case, the court held that consent should, a denial of consent should only be upheld if there's substantial evidence for the reason for denial. In other words, there has to be substantial evidence for the denial, the support of denial. So even if you ignore Act 480, which makes it very easy to transfer franchises, you look under the existing franchise and the case law, it's still a very high burden to deny a franchise. So we just want to, hope you keep that in mind. I know it's, it's challenging for a community that have to go through this process and particularly with Act 480 now being in place and relying on competition. So that's really the choice that the Michigan Legislature enacted. And Comcast does feel like it's in a competitive market. I mean, it not only has to compete against AT&amp;T here, but it has to compete against satellite providers and over-the-top providers. And when Greatland comes into the community and starts providing services, they'll have to do the same. So that, there's that level of protection. The Michigan Legislature decided it would be competitive rather than regulatory. I just appreciate having the opportunity to address those issues.
All right, but I guess what I've heard is that Southfield has a modified agreement.
Yeah.
So we have a right and the authority to change.
Right.
And I understand what you're saying.
All due respect to the suggestion. I mean, obviously, there is a difference of legal standing here. So I hope.
The other, the other piece to do is AT&amp;T was very instrumental in negotiating PA 480. They have D-cockets and so it was the 800-pound gorilla that was helping negotiate that. So a lot of those things are favorable to AT&amp;T.
A hundred percent agree with you and we're competing in the marketplace against that 800-pound gorilla too.
And the thing is, and I understand everything you've said, but I consider my role, I can't speak for anybody else, but I consider my role is to watch out for the residents of the city of Southfield, get the best deal that I can for the city of Southfield. So whatever, whatever we can do, we need to do. You may not like us, but we still have to do what we have to do.
But I think that's all of our role.
True, true.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, let's have a, please go drive.